All right. Good evening. The time being 7:00 PM on October 30th. All members of the planning board being present, call this meeting to order. Before we get started, anyone in the audience who's here for agenda items F, G, H, or I, all of those matters are going to be continued to our next meeting. That would be 1166, 1177, 1187 Main Street, 913 East Street, 1879 Main Street, 1438 Main Street. So those matters are all going to be continued to our next meeting. Nothing will be done with those this evening. We have no approval of minutes, so we'll move on to Agenda Item B1, which is Committee Reports. Any Committee Reports any of the members wish to make at this time?
All set, Mr. Chairman.
All set, Mr. Chairman.
All right, seeing none, we'll move to Town Planner's Report. Ms. Lauter?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First item I want to note is a new hearing we'll have on the November 13th Agenda, and that's going to be for 935 Main Street, a special permit application to convert the commercial unit to an affordable residential dwelling unit. Board members and maybe some members of the Aons may remember that during the annual town meeting of this year, 2023, there was an article to allow for the conversion of commercial units in mixed-use developments to residential, provided that they are affordable, and we have our first application on that matter, which it'll be fun to see. Next item, we received a solicitation from NIMCOG, the Northern Middlesex Council of Governments, looking for projects to put forth on their technical assistance program. And it's an open call, and they're taking answers through November 30th. And one area of interest that I wanted to bring to your attention was possibly undertaking a study of small lot zoning in town. This was something that was started during the zoning bylaw rewrite process, but was ultimately removed as it was determined to require more in-depth analysis. A NIMCOG-sponsored project could help the town take a more serious look at where the majority of half and quarter acre zoning already exists and where it makes sense, if at all. Again, the project proposal deadline is November 30th, so I wanted to see if there was any interest in pursuing this topic. And because the next item is a bit more lengthy, I thought I'd stop there and just see if there was any interest in possibly seeking technical assistance to undertake a study to look at something like that.
I guess I'd say yes. Mr. Duffy?
Yeah, I agree.
Mr. Fratello?
Yeah, obviously, it's good something to look into, review it and see what happens. And I don't know what kind of objections we're going to get throughout the town, but I mean, let's look at it and see where it goes.
Mr. Champa?
Well, if the issue before was that it didn't make it to the finish line because it needed more study, here we go. More study. I'm for it.
Ms. Lozati?
Yep, seems like a good opportunity.
I mean, it seems like it'll fit too, because it'll fold it into the the housing discussion that we're already sort of ongoing with anyways, so. Unless and until we have a discussion amongst that group and someone says, "Don't do it", it makes more sense to just let them, you know, see what they come up with. And then it'll be an option to discuss down the road when they're done.
Yeah, ultimately, it'll just give us a more, a closer view at something that was kind of kicked around a little more informally, at least to arm us with more knowledge, whether this is something we want to pursue, or you say, you know, "We took a closer look, and it doesn't make sense, and we'll move on." But if that sounds good to the board, I am happy to to put that feeler out to NIMCOG if we can kind of go from there.
Okay.
Great. All right. And the third item in my report here for consideration is the MBTA Communities zoning presentation. This presentation was given at the Select Board last Tuesday, October 24th. I see a lot of familiar faces in the audience. I assure you, this is the exact same presentation, and you folks just really must love hearing me present. So we'll just move on with that. And for the board members' benefit, it should be appearing on your screens in front of you, so you don't have to crane your neck. Once again, this is about MBTA community zoning for the town of Tewksbury, just a legislative overview, public feedback summary, and the proposed path to compliance. And for those who may have forgotten or have blacked out for the past few presentations, an MBTA community is a city or town in Massachusetts which has MBTA services or it abuts another community with these services, making it an MBTA-adjacent community. Any MBTA community is required to have at least one zoning district of reasonable size, which I will get into a little bit later, in which multifamily housing is permitted as of right without the need for further discretionary approval. And just to note that as of right, to kind of break that down for folks who aren't familiar with the term, it means that no additional special permits for the use are required. However, site plan review would be used to examine and mitigate a project's impact on the community, similar to the process that we take with retail marijuana, where the use is allowed by right, but we take a look at the site and ingress, egress, parking, and those kinds of things to make sure that it is a viable product. And Tewksbury is considered an adjacent community, noting here that we are surrounded by a couple of communities that do have MBTA services, notably Billrica, Wilmington, Lowell, Woburn, excuse me, Andover, and nope, just Andover and Wilmington have two. All right. Requirements for all adjacent communities: minimum gross density of 15 units per acre. And to achieve the minimum enabled production, this number is a bit higher in some of the proposed districts, so we'll get to that a little bit later as well. Requirements also include no age restrictions, suitable for families with children, noting that this does not affect pre-existing buildings. And districts must comprise of at least 50 acres of land, with 25 acres being contiguous and no portion being less than five acres. So when we talked about reasonable size on the previous slide, that's what we mean here, these parameters right here. And ultimately, these parameters guided the site selection because we couldn't cobble together a bunch of small lots, and large parcels needed to kind of anchor the district. And last but not least, these new requirements are not a mandate to build. This zoning would be put in place for potential future development or redevelopment. It is not an eligibility for eminent domain or public taking. The intention is to enable private development, so it is up to individual property owners, private property owners. And what is required for Tewksbury? We are required by law to adopt zoning to allow for the production of at least 1,214 housing units. Town meeting must adopt compliant zoning before December 2024, so when the clock strikes midnight on December 31st. The proposed zoning district acreage cannot include wetlands, environmentally sensitive resource areas, or publicly owned land. And just a note that I also made last week is that the Attorney General issued an advisory stating that noncompliance will be considered a discriminatory action under state and federal fair housing laws. So taking a look at the timeline of work that's been completed to date, including some of the timeline for the legislation itself. January 14th, 2021, Governor Charlie Baker signed Mass. General Law Chapter 40A, Section 3A, known as MBTA Communities, into law as a part of an economic development bill. On January 25th, 2022, staff presented to the Select Board to introduce the law and outline the preliminary path to compliance. August 10th of '22, DHCD issued compliance guidelines for the zoning districts under 40A, Section 3A, which were further revised on October 21st of that year, and again on August 17th of 2023. And just to note here that they're called guidelines, but they are entirely prescriptive. On January 27th of '23, the town submitted an action plan for MBTA communities, which means we outlined the process by which we plan to pave the path to adoption, so including presentations like this. March 3rd of '23, the town received determination of interim compliance from DHCD, noting that they thought that our plan for compliance made sense and that we were free to move forward with that work. On June 27th of '23, we launched a survey to solicit resident feedback for district siting. We received 333 responses, and this, the intention of this survey was really to get the conversation started with with folks. As a part of that survey, people could also sign up for future updates, which was helpful in getting the word out for some of these other outreach events. On August 15th, a virtual information session was held to present survey results and to discuss the proposed locations in a bit more depth. That was held via Microsoft Teams, and the recording is posted on the town website under the MBTA Communities page. On September 13th of '23, an in-person workshop was held at the library to discuss site-specific advantages and disadvantages. Then on October 12th, there was a second in-person feedback session to discuss public works, public safety feedback of the potential sites. And then as of last week, the presentation to the Select Board was made for discussion and review. And I'll note here that the next section is the districts and how they were discussed, and it is in no way an endorsement of any specific district, and making note that the Select Board did take a vote last Tuesday to remove the Town Center District from consideration. However, it is going to be a part of the holistic review of the review process here. And a couple of other items here, that these districts were plugged into a compliance model issued by EOHLC, the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, which is formerly the Department of Housing and Community Development. They got an upgrade and more alphabet soup. So that compliance model is an Excel format where we were inputting different dimensional qualities to produce the densities for the districts. To generate that minimum density for figures for each district, we input the following criteria: minimum lot size of 10,000 square feet, maximum height of four stories, minimum open space of 20%, and a 1.5 space per dwelling unit for parking. And these minimums and maximums are already existing in our zoning bylaw today across different districts, and some of them actually are carryovers from former overlay districts from the previous iterations of the zoning bylaw prior to the recodification in 2022. So first item here, the South District. This area, for the folks who may not be able to see the outline of the map there, it is an area that is behind the Jenny's Way subdivision and directly abuts Route 93. The total district acreage here is 131.3 acres, with the eligible acreage being 105.8. Again, eligible acreage being the area that is free of wetlands, other environmentally sensitive areas, and any public or private land. And the minimum units per acre to achieve that 1,214 units that the state has set for us is 18.6. The resident feedback that was received during the September 13th feedback session, and I made this note at the last meeting, apologies for the colorblind among us, but I did code these as green for perceived advantages and red for perceived disadvantages. The perceived advantage here is that the area is undeveloped, but however, it is too close to a superfund site or former superfund site at this point. Potential wetland impacts and areas prone to flooding, no existing infrastructure, narrower roadways, and the area being isolated. And just another note that this is currently zoned R40, which is the residential 40 district, which allows for single-family homes under one-acre zoning or the open space residential development wherein a developer could propose smaller-than-one-acre lots. However, they must then take a certain amount of the acreage to propose as permanently protect an open space that can never be built upon. Next one is the North A District. This area encompasses the entirety of the Office Research District. The total district acreage here is 502.5 acres. Again, when you take out those environmentally sensitive areas and wetlands, you get down to 371.1 eligible acres. And the minimum units per acre to achieve that target, 1,214, is 17.1. And once again, the perceived advantages for this area are easy access to highway, large amount of eligible acreage, and has some density already with existing developments. Perceived disadvantages being wetland impacts, too far from transit and amenities. And this last one, I will add the caveat that this is exactly how it was written on the feedback, and I have no professional, you know, feedback for this, is poor air quality near highways, was something that someone had noted. In the Office Research District, the residential uses that are currently allowed are congregate living and assisted living facilities. The North B District is the entirety of the Trelbrook Golf Course. That total district acreage is 128, with the eligible acreage down to 109.4, once you take out those environmentally sensitive areas. And the density here would be 17.6 minimum units per acre. From the resident feedback, we saw that folks found that the large amount of eligible acreage was favorable, however, it being isolated, not near transit or amenities, and the loss of open space were perceived disadvantages. This area is also zoned R40, so again, single-family zoning or that open space residential development. Town Center District here, that encompasses the Archstone and Emerald Court. And again, of note, the Select Board voted expressly to remove this from consideration, but again, and in the interest of being holistic about this, I'm going through all of them. The total district acreage here is 109.1, with the total eligible acreage at 63.4. And the minimum units per acre required here to achieve that target, 1,214, is 25.8. Again, voted 5-0 to remove. The resident feedback here was that it's close to transit and amenities. There is already dense housing, however, wetland impacts, no unbuilt eligible acreage, and multiple private property owners were disadvantages that were cited here. And this district covers both the Mixed Use Business District, which is where Archstone is located, and the Multifamily District, which is where Emerald Court is cited, and potential residential allowed uses. And the underlying districts include single-family homes, two-family, multifamily, and by right. Next one here, Main B. And again, for the folks who can't quite see the map there, this ranges from Orchard Street all the way to Stoneberry Way just before Hinckley Road. The total district acreage here is 180.6, with the total eligible acreage at 152 acres. And the minimum units per acre required here would be 17.2. Noted advantages for this area is that there is some density already, as again, it covers Orchard Street and some other multifamily areas. There is near transit and amenities such as Circle Health and other areas there, and that there are some new sidewalks in that area. Noted disadvantages are that there is little unbuilt eligible acreage, and it is not near the highway. This area is currently zoned Mixed Use Business District, where multifamily is allowed by special permit. And again, special permit being that it requires discretionary approval from this board in particular. And last but not least, Main Street A. This area covers right around Alfreska all the way to the Shaw Sheen and Main intersection, including both Heath Brook and Oakdale Plazas. And the total district acreage here is 84.3, with the total eligible being 63.5 acres. And the minimum units per acre to achieve that 1,214 units is 19.7. Resident feedback here, the noted advantages are that it is centrally located. It is walkable with a lot of sidewalks. It's near transit and amenities such as grocery stores, post office, things like that, and that it has redevelopment potential with a lot of pavement that could possibly stand to be something else. Noting a disadvantage at the least unbuilt eligible acreage, meaning that there's very little acreage that hasn't already been built upon, again, meaning that this zoning could be utilized for redevelopment. This district is the South Village Business District, which allows multifamily and congregate residences by special permit. And this is the proposed timeline as we move forward with this process, starting with tonight, October 30th, the presentation to the Planning Board for review and discussion. Targeting, I really should have updated this. Originally targeting November 3rd for a submittal to the Office of Housing and Livable Communities for a preliminary pre-vote review. The Select Board has tabled their discussion until November 20th, so that will, 28th, excuse me. So right after that meeting will be the first available time I'll have to submit that if the Select Board chooses to move forward. And if we get that preliminary review, then submitting District 2 to the Town Meeting warrant in February for consideration, not only at a Planning Board public hearing in April, but then eventually annual town meeting scheduled for May 8th, 2024. And I am happy to answer any questions.
All right. All right, so first, I'll note that this is in our administrative actions. So this is not a public hearing, so there's no public comment section to this discussion. It's just a discussion for the board. All right. Second, as Ms. Lauter noted, the Select Board was supposed to hear this before us. They heard a little, I guess, and then punted. So we were kind of discussing it first. I know some of the discussion that came out of that, I want to try and get out of the way before we start discussing this, because if it's an issue for anybody, I think we need to deal with it first, which is, there seemed to be some thought of not complying with the law as a way forward. Just from my perspective, that seems ill-advised. Be, well, for at least three reasons that have already, I think all three were already noted, which is the Attorney General has already told you they're coming if you don't comply with this. The state's already said they're going to take away funding if you don't comply with this. And the third stick is individuals or private groups are going to also sue the town potentially for noncompliance with this. So noncompliance does not seem like a wise course of action going forward and just, you know, hoping and praying that for some reason they won't notice that we just basically said pound sand. So if anybody else is advocating for that, we should probably discuss that first. So everybody's on board with at least making a decision tonight on these, then?
Yes.
Okay, good. So with that, I don't know what the feeling is on the group, but would everybody be amenable to not discussing the areas that have already been basically eliminated as well from the list? Because there's already four, no, three, that have been eliminated as a consideration to this point in the process. The ones technically left, sort of, are North B District, Town Center District, and Main A District.
No, Main A, Main B, and North B.
Sorry?
Main A, Main B, and North B.
Main B, I'm sorry. North B. Right, okay, sorry. So Main B. So the only caveat being that the Select Board has already voted to remove Main B.
Town Center.
Oh, Town Center. So it does leave us with three after that?
So after the input from Public Safety and Public Works, the town manager made the recommendation to the Select Board to move forward with Main A and Main B as the districts that we submit to the state for preliminary review, just to give us a couple of options in case one of them comes back not compliant, so that we at least have something viable for Town Meeting.
So Main A
And Main B.
And Main B are the ones left for consideration?
Yes. Those are the ones that have been whittled down to through the public feedback and staff process, yes.
So then first, I guess, if we all agree that we'll remove the others, and we won't bother if that's the field?
So, Mr. Chairman, for discussion, can you explain to me, Alex, why North A was removed? And who decided on that?
So during the public feedback sessions, we had the first one, which was really just to get acquainted with what we have to do and what we're looking at. And after the first workshop where we discussed site-specific advantages and disadvantages, that was one of the ones that emerged as having the least amount of disadvantages and being in the least spirit with the law, being that we want to cite that, being that we're not a community that has MBTA services, that the intention would be to locate the district along an area that has frequent public transit, so the LRTA in our case, and other amenities that are walkable. So through that public discussion, North A and the South were removed as rather isolated and least in spirit with citing near those things. The Town Center was removed by the Select Board. And for North B, Public Safety and Public Works had noted, Public Safety in particular noted response time challenges, that of course, they can get to anywhere they need to be in Tewksbury, but if we're talking about having higher density located somewhere, that North B would require a longer response time, and that was their input.
Again, who decided it? The committee, or is it?
The public. So the public gave this input, and based on that input, we carried through Main A and Main B.
Okay. So then, what I would propose then is that we stick to Main B and Main A for the discussion purposes, because those are the ones that are really
So North B is not?
Not any longer. And then the other one was the Town Center that the Select Board asked to be removed. So I don't think we really need a vote.
So there's only two, really, Main, Main A and Main B?
Main A and Main B, right. So I would say that we stick to those for our discussion, because I think discussing the others is, you know, they're not really under consideration anymore, it's kind of pointless.
Before we jump in, can I just get a clarification on the numbers, the details here? And this is just for Main A, Main B. Main A is 63 eligible acres, 19.7 units per acre. So Main B has 152 acres, which is two and a half times as much, but it's still 17 units an acre? Shouldn't it, if the acreage goes up by two and a half, shouldn't the units per acre go down by the similar inverse proportion?
Unfortunately, the only thing I can say to that is this is how the state's compliance model responded to the criteria that we put in. I don't know. I can't unlock that formula. I understand your question, but I wouldn't be able to answer it intelligently without knowing how they put together those calculations.
Because it's just to me, 17 units an acre times 152 is 2,400 units total, not 1,200.
I understand what you're saying. And I had the, once upon a time, I did have the math worked out, and I can't recall how it worked out, but it's, it's all in the compliance model that once it does all of its considerations of the GIS data, this is what it gave back to us. So I apologize for not having an exact answer to that, but it's also because I don't have an exact answer to their science.
My guess, I think, educated guess on this, this is just a possible. When you look at the Town Center one, and it's telling you 25.8 for what they have, they've got to be running this number against actual places you can do this, as opposed to if it's almost all built out, they have to be taking that into account when they're running this acreage. If there's something already on part of the space, they've got to be discounting the number because you can't do anything there. I mean, that's a pretty high number compared, when you look at it, to have 25.8. I mean, it's probably, it's the biggest one on here, right? So I mean, it has to be accounting for the fact that you sent them a district that you couldn't put anything on. You know what I mean? Like, it's got to be factored into the formula somehow to get that kind of density. But I mean, that's just a guess. If they won't tell us exactly how they're running the number, it's just a guess.
Yeah.
Obviously, my concern is, you know, and I think at all of the workshops that we've done, I've advocated for transparency and verification of any numbers presented. So my concern is if the state has a formula that you, as the town planner, can't really, like, if they're not working with you to explain where these numbers come from, I just want to make sure that, you know, they're not gonna, I mean, they're already, they've already made it clear they're going to force our hand, and that they're going to inflict their will upon us. So what I don't want is to find out that we gave them 152 acres at 17 units per acre, and they're just going to go with it. That, you know, I want to make sure that, you know, what we're talking about is 1,214 units, not, you know, a certain number of units per acre, and we're giving them all the acreage as potential development land, so. And that's, that's the reason I asked for that clarification.
Yep, I can work on that.
All right, well, since we're going to go around the room anyways, why don't we just, Mr. Champa, anyways?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I've attended all of the, both the virtual and live presentations. There's been a lot of lively discussion, a lot of concern. The, you know, a lot of unwarranted concern. And I think Alex has done a really nice job of explaining that this is not a mandate to build. If you own property, nobody's going to just come and kick you out and bulldoze your site or anything like that. That being said, I was generally favorable towards Main A and Main B to begin with. I think they have a lot to offer. My main concerns are Route 38 is a traffic nightmare as it is. We're going to hear probably two or three more items on the agenda tonight that are affected by traffic on Route 38. So the downside is, without any help from the state to alleviate the potential incoming traffic of this type of development, it's going to make that area literally unnavigable. I'm not sure if that's the right word, but, you know, those wait times to get from the light at Main and Shaw Sheen through the light at Livingston to the light at the library and so forth, those wait times are going to go up substantially. And that's, so that would be the, my primary concern. Other than that, I think there's a lot of positives in terms of it's nestled in between our two fire stations, central fire station, South Street Fire Station. It's fairly close to our police station for response times, things like that. And the land is buildable. So I like Main A and Main B. I think my initial preference would probably be towards Main A if I had to pick one over the other, and put one forth as the primary and the other as the backup.
All right.
That's all I have for tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. Mr. Lozati? Mr. Lozotti?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think I echo a lot of the same concerns that others have, others have stated both at the Select Board hearing and here. I do think it's very much in the town's best interest to put forward a compliant plan here for town meeting. I think kind of of all of these choices, Main A and Main B would be where, where I would have landed there as well. I do worry about the traffic on Route 38. I think the thing that would make me lean slightly towards Main A was that it looks a little bit more walkable, and I know that's supposed to be one of the major kind of selling points of this, is to, you know, have communities that are walkable, near mass transit. I can say as somebody who commutes into Boston via the commuter rail every day, neither of these are anywhere really near a commuter rail station, which gives me some concerns and really kind of makes, you know, any thoughts of maybe folks having, you know, one car or less than one car per unit any realistic. I think they would absolutely need cars in here. I also think kind of as we've mentioned at a couple of the other hearings before, there's potentially is an opportunity for us to ask for developers here to contribute a little bit towards our infrastructure, if we are putting so many units here, and potentially that will over, or could overwhelm existing resources. Yeah, I think that's, that's my comment here for it right now.
Mr. Duffy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of, just two, two or three quick questions here on Main A and B. And I think it's a pretty fair question that, that a number of people have had, as, as far as the mandate doesn't address the infrastructure impacts, and I just wonder if we can get some feedback maybe from the state on, on if they have anything in the pipeline.
A few months ago, I had the opportunity to participate in a town hall with Seth Moulton's office, where I did ask that of him and Lieutenant Governor Kim Driscoll, and I was told that there would be no forthcoming infrastructure support from the state specifically, which is, to Mr. Lozotti's point, gives us the opportunity to see if developers can contribute to some of the water or sewer improvements that would take to accommodate a larger scale development.
And I know that the, the whole, the idea is to create these zoning areas to, to allow for, if a developer should decide to come in and build the units, is there any kind of a timeline or requirement to build 1,214 units?
No.
So they may never get built?
In theory, if all of the private property owners in the district choose not to develop or redevelop into multifamily housing, correct.
It's just going to change the zoning to allow a buy right?
Correct.
So a developer, a property owner could come in and say, hey, I want to put, you know, put some units on my, on my acre.
Yes.
Right.
And a lot of these districts, yes, and in these districts, a lot of them, as I had noted, already allow for multifamily, and just at this point, it would increase the density, and in some of the districts, it would take away that, that barrier of a special permit.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I want to thank Alex for all your hard work in this. It's a, it's a, it's a job I don't think anybody wanted to take on, and I have to give you all the credit in the world to do this, because you're not pleasing anybody, per se, especially me. So I did not attend any of your sessions, preposterously, because I'm not in favor of any of this 1,214 units coming to Tuxbury. We've done a lot of work, in my opinion, to promote affordable housing in town. We've gotten up to that 10% level, okay? Maybe we're down now because of the new census that's come in, but we haven't stopped working on it. There's a number of units still coming into town, going to be coming on board, and, and I think that's a credit to this board, the Select Board, and then some of the people in town working on this, so. So I'm not going to vote in any of these districts tonight myself personally, because I'm not in favor of this. I don't like it being stuck down our throats like they're doing, you know? And, you know, that's my opinion, and, you know, I'm not, not, you know, going to say anything different, because I'm not in favor of it. I just don't think that we have, I think we have to do this, but they're not going to be getting my vote for putting it in any place, because I think anybody, anybody that's going to be affected by this, if it does come to, come to fruition, isn't going to be happy with the outcome and the number of units that are going to be in their neighborhoods, and the traffic that's going to affect Tuxbury as Tuxbury residents. I don't think it's in the best interest of Tuxbury, as far as my opinion, to bring this many units into town, when we already have issues as far as traffic and, and so forth in town, but, so I won't say anything else, other than Alex, thanks so much for a great job, and, you know, let's see where this goes, but thank you very much.
All right. So, well, I guess, you know, I don't disagree with Mr. Vitale's thoughts in terms of, you know, the, whether or not this is, you know, the best way to go about it. I, I can only reiterate what I said at the beginning, which is, we don't have a choice. So by not doing anything or refusing to, you know, vote on any proposal, we are lining ourselves up to the three outcomes that I pointed out at the beginning, which is the state coming after us, private citizens and private groups coming after us, and the state cutting off funding to the town. And then you'll still have to comply. So I'm not really sure what the, the point of that is, especially when you consider that this was passed with almost unanimous vote at the State House. So I don't know who anybody thinks is going to be able to do anything about it in terms of changing what's been put out over two years ago, and is only now coming into the time when we have to be compliant with it. No one's changed anything along the way. The only thing that's happened so far is the state has clarified exactly how problematic it's going to be if we ignore them and don't do what they told us to do. So from that perspective, I don't really see the benefit to the town of basically just thumbing our nose at the state and say, we're not going to tell you anything, because we're the only ones going to pay any price for that. So with that thought in mind, I feel like it's, you know, in our best interest to at least put forward the proposal. You know, as Mr. Lozotti's pointed out, it doesn't mean that the 1,214 units will be built, all be built, any be built. You don't know any of that now, because that's all part of, one, because they're driving this towards private business, not the town building it, not the state building it. They're trying to drive private investment and private building. So it only becomes useful if it's economically sound to somebody to develop it. So that's, you know, that comes down to a business decision for property owners in whichever district it may end up in. But I don't think we can ignore the, the issue and, you know, and not respond, because that's not going to, that's not going to get us anywhere, and it's only going to cause us, you know, a lot of problems and a lot of expense, because it's not cheap to basically litigate against the state. And while you're doing that, you're also going to be losing funding into the town at the same time when they cut it off. So it just seems like kind of a double whammy for, you know, not much bang for your buck. At the end of the day, it, it would appear, considering the support that this had at the State House, that it's going to land on you one way or the other. It'd be better if you pick it yourself, rather than have it, you know, kind of stuffed down your throat, so.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Duffy?
I wonder if, you know, to help, help everybody make a decision on this, like, I know that, that if we, if there is a non-compliance issue with the town here, that the state would, you know, withhold, you know, charity funding and so forth. I wonder if we could get a dollar amount on that? In other words, do they?
They will not put a dollar amount on it, because they don't want to put a price tag on what a town is willing to say no to.
Well, hmm.
But just remember, you're also, you're also talking about, even if you figured out what that might be, what funding you might get cut off, you're going to have a hard time figuring out exactly how much you're going to be footing the bill for the legal bills when you decide to take on the Attorney General's office at the same time. And setting aside the fact that you're going to be sued more than likely at the same time by individuals and private groups, who also will have standing to sue the town for non-compliance with this, because they've already said they do. So you're going to get it from both ends while you're having money taken away from the town at the same time. So I'm guessing you're going to have a hard time figuring out what that cost is going to be, but it's going to be significant, and the likelihood of you beating the Attorney General's office and those, those private groups is, you know, not, 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 not your best interest.
I'm not even saying that, I was just saying it would be another piece of the puzzle.
Right, no, I know, I'm just saying, but the, the true cost-
Yeah.
-has two other factors that I think you'd have a hard time putting a price tag on.
Sure, sure.
So, I, you know, I, I think, you know, I know, like I said, I know, I know the, the Select Board punted this for a while, and I know they, they plan on, you know, pulling in the, the, the-
Delegation.
-state delegation, but, you know, this, this law's been in place for two years. I, I can't imagine why we're just now talking to them. And at the same time, at, what was it, 98% of the State House voted in favor of this? Was it six? I feel like four no votes between the House and the Senate. That's not a strong position to try and argue, you know, against, you know, this is, this is not not happening. This is happening, so. I, I would agree with, you know, both of my other colleagues here in terms of which, which preference out of the two that we have in front of us, which, Main A and Main B, which is Main A. You know, obviously, I think, you know, for, for, oh, I know, the other part was the spirit of the law is another problem that we, you know, the state hasn't really been completely clear on, but it's very possible we're going to find out that when all these things get submitted, that when the state looks at them, and if, you know, towns tried to be cute and, you know, put these things where it's never going to happen, because the areas are completely built out, that you're going to find them kicking those back and telling you, this is not what we asked for. In which case, you're just going to have to start all over again. So, you know, it doesn't really make sense to try to be cute about it. So from these two, you know, they, they seem to, to fit the spirit of what's being asked, because I know, you know, it's not walkable, I would agree with that. You're probably not going to walk from either of these two sites to, whether it's Lowell or Wilmington, which are the most likely ones, because, you know, you're not going to Andover, because, you know, that's way away, we just happen to board with them. And Bill Ricker's sort of the same thing, you're, you're not, but you can get there, you know, we, we like to talk about our bike racks, but you could do that, because I've seen people do that. But more importantly, Main A is actually on the current bus line, whereas Main B, it's part of what they may change, but that's, you've, you've missed that. It's already gone up towards the State Hospital, gone around it and come down the other side.
Right, right, it's connected by sidewalks to the other stops on East Street, yeah.
Right, so you, you at least have the bus line that can get you actually between both MBTA stations that runs right down Main Street. So that would seem to be, you know, within spirit of, you know, using the commuter rails. I would think and hope that if, if this site were used, you know, that, you know, depending on which, where all of housing may or may not go, that if there's enough in one place that you might be able to get one of those, you know, one of the bus stops that kind of comes off and comes into a site and comes back out, which hopefully would encourage more people to take it to the commuter rail, if that's where they're going. Again, hopefully alleviating some of the traffic, I mean, there's only so much you can do. You know, it's our, it's, it's the road we have to work with, so. And really, that's the only real huge difference to me between Main A and Main B. It's just, it's already accessible on the bus line in terms of, you know, units per acre, they're pretty much in the same, the same range, there's not a huge difference between the two. You know, they both have, obviously, A has more potential for actually complying, because there's more space that could be built on than Main B. So for that reason, I would, I would suggest Main A over Main B as the secondary choice. So that's, that would be my order of preference as well. So the only other thing I'd say, and I know, you know, we had people here tonight that were here for one of the sites, just to make sure that it didn't get picked, but, you know, I'll say it, I said it at the last meeting that we, we attended, I'll say it here for those in the room, and anyone who happens to be listening, why they're watching it at home, I don't know, but it's fine that you came to these meetings to make sure that the spot you didn't want got picked. That's all well and good, and that was, you know, good of you to do so. But if you don't show up the night that this gets voted on at town meeting, you run the risk that that gets voted down, and we start this thing all over again, which brings your property or your spot, or whatever it is you care about, right back into the loop potentially, because something's going to have to get passed. Now, I don't know if I got an answer to a question I asked already, but there's, you also run the risk of people meddling with this at town meeting, because people like to do that sometimes, and, you know, sort of just jam up the process. Another reason why you might want to be there, to try to avoid that happening, because when people do that, everybody gets confused, and all of a sudden, it's just easy to say no to something, than try to sift through what's happened in the course of the night, and then we're right back again to square one, and, you know, what you thought was over may not be. So for those folks who've come out to all these meetings, I'm glad you did, I'm glad you weighed in, but the process isn't over until we're done, and we voted on one, approved one, sent it off to the state to get signed off on. So, you know, don't, don't forget about this over the next few months until we get to May, because it's going to be important, it's going to matter to everyone it matters to. You know, that we, we go to town meeting, and there's 50 people out in the audience who make an awful lot of decisions for everybody in this town. If that's what you're comfortable with, stay home. If not, I'd show up. So any other thoughts, concerns, comments on this from any of the board?
One question, Mr. Lozotti, was where did the 1,214 number come from?
That number, yes, that number, each, each community was given a number by the state to use as their target to work towards. So another community, I think, has like 900 and change, some have 2,500.
Because of the area we have, as far as how big Tuxbury is.
They didn't, they didn't tell us where that number came from.
Okay.
We all just got one.
Gotcha.
Excuse me, Alex, I thought it was generally supposed to be 10% of your current housing stock.
That's not necessarily shaken out to be the number for other communities.
Maybe that's just their point of departure, and then they tweak it.
Well, it's, ours is very close to our 10% of year-round housing units, but that number hasn't proven to be the genesis for other communities, so it may have informed the one that they picked for Tuxbury, but I can't say that with any kind of level of authority.
One more question, Alex. Our rate, our percentage for affordable housing now is what, at what?
On paper, it is 8.99% after the census was updated in June, and the SHI subsidized housing inventory was updated in August. And we did also, right on the heels of that SHI getting updated, approve the comprehensive permit for the adaptive reuse of 1,775 Andover Street, which is the residence and conversion. That amounts to an exercise in paperwork. We haven't submitted the local action unit application to the state for that, but when that application does get submitted, we will conceivably be over the 10%, if by a hair.
Okay. So just, because you brought up, that's a good clarification too, that this is not affordable housing, that's not what this is.
No, the only thing this is, yeah, is that we are allowed to have our inclusionary zoning applied to this project, so the town already has a 15% affordable rate requirement for multifamily developments, and that is no get out of jail free card, developers have to do that. The only thing that this can't do is someone couldn't use the MBTA community's zoning as a way to tack on an affordable requirement. If a community already had it on the books, we're welcome to apply it, however, it can't be a vehicle to do that.
So because we have it in place already, both of these zones, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Will, will have a affordable component, meaning when these get built, it will make us no worse off percentage-wise, because the units are built. Like, we won't fall behind in the number?
Right.
If anything, we'll be a little ahead of the curve, because, you know, the aim is at a minimum 10 to stay out of 40B.
Yes.
Okay. So it gives these two sites, obviously, extra, you know, use as opposed to somewhere else in town that didn't have that already underlying the development area. So, okay. So with that, so, so we can move this forward to-
Chairman, just one secondary comment, it's, one is, if I read the minutes of the last Select Board meeting, one of the other reasons they're punting this is because the other recent government, or the governor's order in housing bond, will affect potentially the state land that's in Tuxbury. They wanted to wait and talk to our delegation to see if what's being built there would satisfy this requirement, and maybe make that versus MBTA communities an either-or, not a both. So, which I think that also is something that we want to be very interested in, because if we're, if we get stuck with both, I mean, if we're already concerned about either-or, and they go and do something even, you know, similar to this, or even more dense at the State Hospital land, you know, that could, that could create some major infrastructure issues. The other thing that I'm interested in, being new to the board, and I've actually contacted Representative Robertson to see if we can just have a little discussion about what are our options, as far as what we are allowed by law to require of a developer when they, when they're doing a multifamily- when they're doing a multifamily or other larger scale project. So not, you know, not if someone wants to build one or two houses because they had some extra land or something like that, but when we're getting into some of these larger scale projects, where is the threshold before we ask for, you know, some sort of recompense? Because they may be building in an area with older sewer lines or water lines and the new development is going to stress those lines faster and then was going to be replaced at the cost and burden of all of the other residents of town, not just the seven or 15 or so new residents in that area that were the straw that broke up that particular camel's back. One of the first large-scale developments that I experienced proposal-wise was the mall project. So we're going back to early 2000s. And there was a lot of, basically, I wouldn't call it mitigation, but there was a lot that they were going to offer the town to offset the impact of the traffic and everything else. I remember there was going to be an ambulance, there was going to be increased funding for police, so on and so forth, DPW, et cetera. And so, so it's not something completely foreign to development in this town. It just, apparently, it just hasn't been happening for a long time, so. I don't know where to begin with all of that. Like I said, I'm going to have a conversation with Representative Robinson, Robertson at some point. But I didn't know if anybody here has any insight based on your longer, would have been great to come up with this when Mr. Fowler was still here, obviously, but.
Well, I know, I think at least part of that, like, some of that linkage stuff is not allowed anymore. So like the ambulance thing, like, that was something, the last time I think something like that was even discussed was when Hawthorns was done, but sometime after that, there was a law change where you can't connect those things up. You know, infrastructure, like, you know, talking about dealing with lights and sidewalk, that kind of stuff, yes. But, you know, we'll give you an ambulance or whatever if you let us do our project. That stuff isn't allowed anymore. So that wouldn't be, but, you know, other kind of things that are directly to the project itself would be discussable, you know, you could discuss them, but that's, you can't do the other thing anymore.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I think a lot of that was born out of 40B requirements, where it's actually, we're kind of seeing it play out with the, with retail marijuana as well, where the HCAs were put in place to give mitigation to the towns and they could kind of get that blanket, you know, three or six or whatever percent contribution back to the town without it being tied to project-specific impacts. But they've really, they've pulled that back quite a bit. I think 40B was similar where it's not, you're just not going to get a new cruiser or a new ambulance. You have to tie it to site-specific impacts where I think, as Mr. Johnson noted, infrastructure improvements specifically to sidewalks or, or water lines, sewer lines, those kinds of things that are a little more quantifiable and can be tied directly to the project are going to be, you know, we're going to be more than able to discuss those items.
So would upgrades to the Heathbrook School be on the table considering that any families moving in would be going to the Heathbrook?
Typically, 40, and again, this is just because I know this is more closely related to 40B, but when discussing potential impacts, I know that schools are not on the table as part of the discussion. So I, I would hazard a guess at it not being, because it's not super project-specific in, in that very direct way, I would expect that it may not be allowed as like a tangential issue.
Okay. I don't know if we'll have more discussion on this in the future, but, I mean, on the bright side, it would probably take, even if somebody started today, it would be 10 years before even phase one of a project of this magnitude were to come online. And hopefully, if we're lucky, there's going to be other more attractive projects to the non, non-Tuxbury developers that, you know, if they're just looking to pounce on Massachusetts, like if it's Toll Brothers or something like that, hopefully they'll find other towns with, you know, better sites that offer them a lot more than what we have here, so.
Well, and plus also, the intent of this is because, one of the reasons why it covers as much space as it does, the intent isn't to drive this to be on one site anyways.
Right.
It's just you're trying to keep the zone in one place, so that's why you're required to have the zone, the 25 of the acres.
Yeah.
Continue it contiguous. But the idea isn't the same as like a 40B project where you're looking for a site and you'll get, you have to put it all there to be compliant with the 40B exemptions. So, you know, when we discussed it, I want to be a little careful that we're not acting like someone is supposed to put up a 1,200-unit building because that's not really the intent of this. I'm not saying it, I suppose it could have happened if you could meet other requirements, but this isn't like a 40B where they're just going to tell you to go pound sand and build, you know, in, you know, despite what you might want, just simply build something completely different because they don't have to comply with it. You still have to comply with things, just now you have to comply with them as a right as opposed to going through a bunch of hoops. But nobody's trying to, there's nothing on here is directing this to be, you build one project and meet the unit requirement. This is anywhere in that district.
Correct.
Just like you could build a single-family home anywhere in a 4, an R40 district, not one specific place, anywhere in that whole district. That's the same thing here. So you've got the district of however many hundred acres, you know, 100 and something acres, anywhere it fits, you know, so it could be something where something is now. You could look at it and say, okay, if I knock that down, I could do X. So you might find that to be economically sensible if you wanted to do that. Or you want an empty space, do it there. But not, this isn't like a 40B project where it's just one thing, one place, all your units have to go on one piece of land. So that's a little bit different. So I want to be a little careful at how we, like, you know, how we describe it because it's a zone, not a piece of property. Otherwise, it'd be spot zoning. We'd be picking one piece and saying, do it here, nowhere else. So the only other one, you'd mentioned the state hospital, at least from the purposes of this one, though, publicly-owned land doesn't satisfy this. Even if you did something on public land.
Right.
It wouldn't.
Right. Mr. Champa's point, though, from last Tuesday's meeting was that the thought was to see what the appetite was for doing development on state hospital land, and just to note, a lot of it is under conservation restrictions, so that would require a further act of legislation. Not saying that somebody wouldn't do it if they really wanted to, but what the appetite is for building at the state hospital to see what the impacts of that would be as a possible replacement to the town's compliance with MBTA communities. But where that bill only got put forth last week, I expect that the conversations surrounding that haven't gone, excuse me, terribly far yet, but that was, that was the discussion is that, no, the publicly-owned land can't be a part of this specific progress, excuse me, process, but there is a thought as to whether it can be done in place of.
Okay. All right. So if there isn't anything else on the discussion, if you give our recommendation for the, for the sites, to go back to the select board. So do we have a motion to propose one of the sites as the first choice?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I'll make a motion to approve Main District Site A as our primary choice for the planning board's recommendation for MBTA communities' compliance. And our secondary choice would be, can we do them, primary and secondary?
Together, right?
In one motion? Okay. And to offer Main B or recommend Main B as our secondary choice for consideration for the MBTA communities' project.
All right. So motion made, seconded. All those favors signified by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Opposed.
All right. Motion carries for one, so we'll make that recommendation up to the select board.
Thank you.
All right. That takes care of MBTA. We'll bring us to Agenda Item B3, 307 Old Boston Road as-built acceptance.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Board members, for the record, Dick Cuco from Woodland Design representing the applicant at 307 Old Boston Road. We were here in March of 2021 with our as-built. There was a couple of items that were deficient at the time. The owner of the property tried to get the contractor to come back and fix it. The contractor never came back, tried to take legal action and decided that it was a lot less money to just hire another contractor to complete the project than it would be to litigate it. So he did that. He went out and hired additional contractors and they finished up all the work that was left on the list from DPW to be, to be completed for the project, for the sign-off. And that was just completed probably less than a month ago. And we submitted the final plans to DPW and they gave their sign-off letter on October 20th. So that's why so long between March 21st and today.
Understood. All right. Mr. Champa?
Based on the letter from Mr. Hardeman, it appears that the as-bills are fully compliant, so I, I'm fine with acceptance of this as-built package.
Mr. Duffy?
Chairman.
Mr. Vataya?
I am all set, Mr. Chairman, except for one question I have. What is the performance guarantee we have on file for you?
It's $10,000 in a passbook.
Okay. That we'll, we'll be giving back to you.
I hope. I don't know how much interest they've been paying for seven years.
No comment.
All right. The chair is all set as well. All right. Do we have a motion regarding the as-built?
I'm making a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we accept the as-built 307 Old Boston Road as proposed.
Second. All right. Can we, can we roll into that, the release of the, okay, we'll just put it all together, the release of the 10K bond, so. All right. We have a motion made and seconded. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
This is to 22, Agenda B4, 2230 Main Street as-built acceptance.
Just to get your name for the record.
Yep. Tom Schornberg of Civil Design Consultants, here for this as-built acceptance and request for bond release. For this project, we've submitted as-built materials to engineering. They've been reviewed and could have no further comments per their October 24, 2023 letter. They found the development to be in substantial compliance. If the board has any questions, I'd be happy to answer if I'm able.
Mr. Vataya?
I am all set, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lozotti?
No questions from me.
Mr. Duffy?
All set, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Champa?
All set, Mr. Chairman.
All set as well. What is the amount of the bond? You know?
Either 10 or 20, I forget.
See, I don't have that number.
But you'll be happy with 10. I like it.
Well, we won't put a number on it, we'll just release the bond. So do I have a motion to?
I'm making a motion, Mr. Chairman, to accept the as-built 2230 Main Street.
All right. So motion made, do I have a second? Motion made and seconded, will also include the release of the bond, whatever it is. Motion made and seconded, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Moving on to Agenda Item C, 553 Main Street, signed special permit. Do we have a motion to waive the public reading? Motion made and seconded, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Gentlemen, once you're settled, just give your names for the record, and the floor is yours.
Steve Venetti here for Core Development and Management.
Sean Adriano, C2 Design.
Good evening, board members. Thank you for taking the time. Thank you, Ms. Lauter, for your help in setting this up as well. My name is Steve Venetti. I'm the Executive Vice President of Development and in-house counsel for Core Development and Management. We're owners of, this will be our 70th Planet Fitness location, predominantly in New England. You know, this project has a little bit of special meaning for me in particular because the Planet Fitness in Tuxbury was the first one I ever belonged to, when it was a world gym, and then when I transferred over to Planet Fitness, I grew up in Billrica, so I'm, I'm kind of a local boy, familiar with, with the area and whatnot. So happy to be bringing Planet Fitness finally back to Tuxbury after looking for locations for quite some time for the company. Definitely happy to be back in the community. You know, we're, we're just excited to, to be, to be a part of the community, to bring affordable fitness to the community, and we, we're excited to get open. Sean is going to discuss with you a little bit more of the specifics of the sign package and whatnot. Obviously, our intent is to be productive members of the community. He'll talk about the exact setback and whatnot, but you, you know, I'm sure you're all familiar with this property. It's very far setback. We actually think one of the reasons that Crunch did not make it in this particular location is because of their, quite frankly, ridiculous sign on the front of that location that cannot really be seen from the street, you know, that you don't have a, a second chance to make a great first impression. So that's really important to us, and that's why we're here.
Agreed, agreed. The facade itself, the entry itself sits back about 380 feet from the roadway, direct, direct line, shortest distance. Obviously, as you get to the actual entry to the property, it goes a little bit longer based on the radius. An array of trees, block, you know, visibility to the building coming down Main Street, and then obviously, the, the angle of the building prevents visibility heading back towards the highway. As you saw on the rendering, you know, it's not just about the sign, it's also about visibility. It's part of the main reason we were looking to extend the parapet and raise it was to, I, create an identity for Planet Fitness. As Steve had mentioned, you know, the previous tenant, they didn't succeed, there wasn't much visibility, it was kind of like a little tack-on sign and, and, you know, Planet Fitness wants to have their own identity within the plaza, distinguish themselves from Ocean State Job Lot, and then also kind of maybe hopefully put some pressure on Jabba to, maybe they'll want to improve their facade on that building over time as well. So with the raising of the facade, we're just trying to create a presence, balance, you know, the sign gets balanced within the facade, we're centering, you know, centering the raised element over the two columns that exist. So we're working a lot with a lot of existing elements, you know, painting the block, painting some of the, the windows to match, some of the storefront doesn't match all the way through, and then painting, painting the metal panel. As for the sign itself, any questions on the facade?
We'll go through it after, just do your presentation.
Sure, sure. As for the sign itself, when the application for the building permit was submitted, we had some elevation drawings as well. We were under the January 2023 zoning bylaws. That's how we had designed the, the facade and the design. Coming to today, once we had permit, we learned that we had to present in front of you great folks and obtain approval for the signage itself, and that, that is why we're here today.
All right. We'll start with Mr. Duffy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, the LED lights of today are much brighter than the incandescent lights were years ago, you know? And I know, I mean, I have a neighbor three houses down whose, whose motion light, you know, blinds me on my, on my porch, you know what I mean? So I think I would just like, Mr. Chairman, to reserve the, the right to revisit a lighting issue if it became one down the road with any of the, with people in the area.
Yeah, could I, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. Yeah, we, we always want to be, you know, stewards to the community. We rely on the community probably more than most of your retail businesses do because our members come from the community, and so we certainly wouldn't want to anger anybody with any of that. The wonderful thing about this particular site, too, is there's a pretty high tree line immediately adjacent to where the sign's going to be, blocking a lot of that light. And then, as Sean said, because it goes so far out, and if I could just, I mean, you got the tree line all over here, you got the tree line here, as well as a hill going upward, and then you have the Main Street. So I think that'll probably mitigate itself for the most part, but I certainly understand your concern.
Okay. And lights are off at midnight?
Yes, we can do that.
Yeah. Think that's a reflem, right?
Yeah, unless you're open, I don't think the intent is to be open here. We're not intending to be open 24 hours a day, any of the days, so.
The back are basically, the backboard, if you will, portion of the sign needs to be kind of like reconstructed on, you know, so it's a little different from what you have there. You're not actually mounting the sign on the existing facade, right?
That's right, sir.
Yeah. Okay, so my understanding is, Mr. Chairman, that we need to do a, that we need to approve that as well?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So I, I mean, generally, I, I'm glad to see you guys going in. I think it's a good, good, good use of that space, and I wish you guys a ton of luck down there, and I think I'm, I'm okay.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Lozotti?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, I'm just kind of looking at street view here, going down Main Street.
Yes, sir.
Kind of towards, towards the proposed location. And I'm not sure if any sort of lift in the facade there is going to be visible no matter what. You got trees, then you got somebody's backyard that you look like you'd pretty much be advertising to.
Yeah.
It doesn't really look like, at least going down Main Street here, like that would be the most visible location. Seems almost like you'd want to invest more in the kind of the sign out front of the plaza.
Yeah, we, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, go ahead.
We will be certainly trying to do that as well, it's a condominium association, so we have to deal with that for the, what you're talking about is the pylon sign. We would love additional pylon signage as well, we've already talked to Ocean State about that. In this particular instance, I can assure you, I've driven this many, 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 many times to look at this exact issue. It will be visible if you're driving sort of toward, what is that, that's nor, south, sorry, south. So if you're traveling south, this will definitely be visible as you're traveling south, and you can look, it is a finite period of time that it will be visible, but I think, you know, what we look at there too, Mr. Lozotti, is the impact to just the eye and the sense, right? Because when our members driving by, you're going to recognize it, people know Planet Fitness purple, people will see the presence. And the other thing to keep in mind too, this has been vacant for, since before COVID, right? This was not a COVID victim gym, this was vacant since before COVID. When people see stuff like this happening, they make note of it, they make note of the new construction, they make note of it, they get excited about it. So that's another thing that definitely makes a difference. In raising this up, just that five feet, is still going to pop because it's not just a replacement of that blue box.
Yeah, I do agree that the blue box that they have there right now is just not visible whatsoever.
Sure.
I do think the Planet Fitness logo will shine through a little bit more, and I have been a member at that gym for the last two locations that have been there, so would be happy to see it kind of get restored. For the, I know you've submitted a couple of renderings here, you submitted the one with the extra elevation and the one without the elevation. From the street, is there any difference in visibility? Kind of, it looks like you can kind of see where the existing parapet is up there on the one that would be level with the rest of the storefront.
It's not just a pure visibility difference, it's a psychological difference for the eye as it goes by. I mean, we've done this quite a few times. It makes a huge difference when you change that elevation, because what it does, as Sean indicated, is it gives an identity to the space just because you have that roofline, you have an elevation, anytime you put a parapet or anything like that on something of that nature, you're going to draw attention to it, it's why they exist everywhere, right? I mean, quite honestly, that's why businesses invest. You know, this is hundreds of thousands of dollars just in this, to invest in that. The reason you do that is because it does make such an impact with your members or your customers.
Yeah, I think just from my concerns, it doesn't necessarily fit with the rest of that plaza. I think I'm okay overall with the rest of the sign kind of proposals, just the one without the actual added height up there.
May I address the rest of the actual plaza? So I think Sean indicated, we're certainly pushing Ocean State. Mr. Steinberg, who is the Real Estate Director for Ocean State, has actually kind of, this is our sixth Ocean State, and we've had good luck with them kind of improving after us because it gives him a little bit of ammunition on his end to be able to go to his folks and say, hey, look what Planet Fitness just did, this is an opportunity for us to improve as well. So fingers crossed, I can't make any promises or representations to this board, but fingers crossed that it's an improvement across the board, not just for us.
Yeah, no further questions from me.
Mr. Pataia?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So we're actually coming north, you can't see Planet Fitness at all?
Yes, sir.
Because you're right by it. So the only time you're going to see it is going south.
Yes, sir.
And looking into the plaza, so.
Yes, sir.
The problem with your sign being larger is you need a waiver for that, because it's over the allowance, all right, because of the height factor, five foot four, I think, over the height of the roofline.
Our sign is total over the five feet. Upon the original zoning code from January 2023, which is what we were originally geared towards, we are still under the allotted square footage based on frontage. We have 75 feet.
Yeah, but if you're going five foot, five feet four over the roofline?
Yep.
That's where you need the waiver, correct?
Yes, so the bylaw changed in May of 2023 to change the calculation. So instead of it being a square footage being a proportion to the linear footage based on the distance from the street, it is instead a staggered three, four, and five-foot height limit in the sign itself, and then again, a proportion of the length of the sign. So for a sign that is 300 feet from the street, it is a maximum of five feet in height, which you folks letters, because you stack them, it is seven feet for the total sign, and then it is allowed to be three-quarters the length of the business facade. So the idea when we redid our bylaw was to stagger the height, obviously based on how far you are from the street, but we found that the calculations under that were limiting businesses in a way, so we tried to make it a little more calculation-friendly, I don't know how else you'd say it, but to keep that intention. So the May 2023 update, because you folks applied after that, that's what applies. So that's what we're taking into consideration here. So while you are almost certainly within the length of three-quarters of the length of the business facade with a maximum of 50 feet, you are above that five-foot height just because instead of going long, you guys are stacked.
And is it possible to go for the waiver?
Well, do you have to ask for a waiver?
Well, that's what you're here for.
That's what you're here for. Yeah, that's what you're here for, but you are exceeding what you're allowed there.
Understood.
So my question is, why can't we just keep it into the exact parameters that we have rather than have to go for the waiver? And not go above the roofline like you'd like?
Yeah.
And just keep it at the same roofline? Being by the site today, the roofline continues all the way down before Ocean State, all the way down at the same height, rather than having to, you guys, I like the sign, I like the improvements to it, I'd just like to see you keep it in the same parameters as everybody else because it's a precedent setting, oh, you gave one to Planet Fitness, why can't we do it? So along those same lines, is this sign size the same as other Planet Fitness signs?
Yes, sir. Yeah, and we base our signage obviously off of codes, and we go for variances and things like that pretty regularly, because again, you don't get that second chance to make a good first impression. I would argue about, you know, for your first comment, and you know, example would be Saugus Mass was one of our clubs, right? Is another, it actually looks a lot like this, a little bit different parapet, it was the old Bed Bath &amp; Beyond off of Walnut Street. The reason I bring that one up is it's one of our newer clubs. You know, I think that I would argue with the first comment that you made as far as the roofline goes, I actually think the inverse should be true, that Ocean State should bring up their presence a little bit, and that it would make the plaza pop a lot more. I think this is going to look far more attractive than what's there right now, I think it's going to look far more attractive than what the Ocean State is, and I think that's the purpose, right, of a lot of these bylaws, right, is attractiveness, it's, you know, good for business, good for advertising, but I don't think this is going to repulse anybody, I don't think it's going to be bad to the eye or anything like that. I mean, that's generally what sign ordinances are there to protect against, and I think this is going to be quite the opposite. If you look at Saugus, it really is, it's a great facade, it's really beautiful, and it brings a vibrance to the center, it brings an activity to the center, it pops, there's no question about it.
Well, it's new, first of all.
Yes, sir.
People know you're coming.
Yes, sir.
People have seen the progress as far as someone's going in there. Anybody visiting Ocean State Job Lot, and I've asked, people have asked me a number of times, what's going next to Ocean State? I'm like, Planet Fitness is coming. I've got about five emails already from these guys wanting me to join, so, and I knew you were coming, so people know you're coming.
Yes, sir.
So I mean, I just have a problem with you going over and above the sign size and making a precedent for other businesses saying, well, listen, so, but other than that, I think I like the sign, I like this design, and you guys are open at, what, 5:00 AM, is that correct?
Yeah, yes, sir. Well, Mondays through Thursdays, and then, I'm sorry, Mondays through Fridays are 5:00 AM, and then it closes at 9:00 on Fridays. It closes, it depends really on the check-ins, but it closes around 11 o'clock on Monday through Thursday, and then usually 7:00 to 7:00 on the weekend.
So you may want a 5:00 AM light for the sign?
Yes, sir.
Rather than a 6:00 AM, because that's our regulation?
Yes, sir.
Right, so, just to keep that in mind, board members, so, and then, that's all I have right now, so I'm all set.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So Mr. Pataia and I do share one comment there that I fully understand, and I don't necessarily disagree with where you're coming from, sir, as far as what you're trying to accomplish here. But, you know, my election to this office, I viewed that as a, the townspeople of Tuxbury to ask me to enforce the guidelines that they have voted for at town meeting, which are, you know, guidelines, bylaws, et cetera, that they hem and haw and wrangle and wrestle and so forth, even to make minor changes, and then they ask us to enforce them. So in this particular case, I'm trying to just get a sense of what eight feet by 19 feet is, and I'm thinking that's about like the width of this area and the height of the open space, almost just about to that little bump out on the column there. That's a pretty substantial sign. Now, you also unknowingly, I lived on Walnut Street in Saugus.
Yeah.
And grew up in Saugus, so I know all of those areas, and Bed Bath &amp; Beyond could not put a sign up in Tuxbury. There's no way to take what they do and fit it?
Yep.
Into our zoning bylaw or our sign bylaw. So you're kind of stuck between a rock and a hard place. However, in this particular case, I'm inclined to ask for, or I'm disinclined to agree to the waiver, because what I don't want is to set off a chain reaction to Ocean State Job Lot, and then Lazy River, and then Papagino's, and then going around the corner, we have several other new businesses coming in, and they're all going to come in here and say, well, look, you did it for Planet Fitness, you have to do it for me.
And certainly when we applied for the signage, it was in compliance, right? That was the intent as far as the actual size of the signage.
Yeah.
At the time, I'm sorry, I know you said May 2023, we were in negotiations, we designed the sign prior to that, so it was around January 2023 that we started that process, I believe.
Yes.
And so we went with the maximum sign allowable, the size of the sign. I'm not saying, I'm not going to represent to you folks that it needs to be exactly that large of a sign itself. The importance to us is to have a presence and to, the elevation is actually very important to us above the existing roofline, because that is what really presents as the entrance to the business, as the business being present there, so that is very important to us, and proportionate sign with the facade.
So you could do your bump out of the facade?
Yep.
You could still shrink the sign, make it a little bit longer, maybe, you know, wrestle with it, you know, look at some different design features, and see if there's a way you can get the same pop that you're looking for, but within that five-foot high, and obviously that would give you some more length to work with.
We'd have to go horizontal instead of stacked, right?
Yeah, we'd have to, yeah.
Yeah.
But it wouldn't for here, it'd have to be.
And, you know, just to add a little bit here to the dimensions, I mean, you're asking for a 60% increase in the height requirement. So we had one in here recently for a property on Main Street, they were off by like a foot.
Yeah.
Might even have been like six inches or something like that. So, you know, to ask us to go to blow out the bylaw requirement or the zoning requirement by 60%, that's kind of a big ask.
I think it's kind of a little bit of a skewed number because we're stacking it. If we were to, if we were to put it horizontal, we would meet the compliance because the letters are 44 and three-quarters inch wide. What we're just responding to is just better proportions for the facade itself versus taking that whole parapet, building it wider. We're trying to keep it, you know, a little bit more balanced over the entry and, you know, ensuring that Ocean State has their territory and we have with our territory.
Yeah, so if we took the letters and unstacked them?
Yep.
It would be wider, but I think still in compliance.
Yeah, and with the height.
Well, that's why I've asked repeatedly that we receive a submission of a compliant sign, so we could see what that would look like.
I believe we did submit that.
We submitted, we submitted one where we kept the facade low, and then we have some...
Right, I saw one without the bump out, but I think the sign was still over the five-foot.
That was because of the confusion about the five feet.
No, no, I understand. And, you know, if you want to revise and take another shot at this, you know, knowing what you know now, you know, I feel like you could probably do something pretty great and still be either in compliance or much, much closer to compliance.
I mean, if we're in compliance, do we need to present to the planning board?
Yes, because the bylaw does not allow for signs to exceed the roofline, so this roofline, the elevation increase does also have to be approved.
So if the elevation increase is approved, and we comply with the sign on the elevation increase?
Then that's the signed special permit, because the purpose of having you folks come to the board for the discretionary approval is not only to approve possible waivers to the dimensions of the channel letters themselves?
Yep.
But also to allow for the elevation increase where no other roofline is being increased.
Yeah.
So that was really just a way to capture how this could be allowed.
Sure.
Because otherwise, letter of the law, it wouldn't be.
Because, I mean, to answer your concern, we could absolutely, I mean, what we're really talking about then though is, is the same, effectively the same size sign itself, just not stacked, right?
Yes.
I mean, would you prefer that?
I prefer what's in compliance, quite frankly. So that's, in this role in this chair, that's what I'm looking for.
I mean, yeah, aesthetically, I guess, in just my opinion, I don't know if you've seen it, or?
It would look something like this.
It is not.
I did not see that in the package.
No, we had our sign vendor put this together, I believe it was.
After Thursday or?
That one was included in your package, that should have been the separate file in addition to the application package.
This one? It's not stacked, that one?
I'm sorry?
No, I was just saying, that's one where it's not stacked, I think we had one where it was stacked in the back.
Oh, that.
Oh, we had it stacked, but it was.
Sign without facade experience.
Oh, no, I only received the one with stacked letters, I never, I didn't receive that one.
Oh, okay. Yeah, because this.
Sorry, I thought it was the other one.
This still has the, you know, the elevation, but it's non-stacked letters, I mean.
So I would say that's just my opinion.
Sure.
This is not my official.
Understood.
As far as I'm concerned, I feel that is a nice compromise of you get your, hey, here's the entrance to Planet Fitness, come see us, but the sign falls within compliance.
We might have to widen it.
Yeah, widen it, yeah, yeah. I get, I'm sorry.
Go ahead. Now, to get this to fit, the sign vendor scrunched the letters together a little bit from the PFHQ standards, who determines what our sign is and how it's designed. We would probably have to increase the overall dimension here of the parapet by probably a foot or so.
Height-wise?
No. The height, we don't want to increase any more height, it would just be the width, just so that it feels, it's, right now the letters are kind of on the edge, and we just want to provide a little bit more aesthetic border.
So for our picture, that's the gray?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
The light gray, sorry?
Yes, the light gray portion.
Okay.
Are you able to consider that despite not having it in your package, or?
Well, I don't know.
Yes, sir, sorry.
To my comments, and then, you know, I didn't know if there was a way for that to be an amended submission here in our, you know, here tonight, because we do like to get things off the docket.
The only issue with that is, the only way to do that would be to basically say, we approve this, but you got to send us the final one, and then it's, you know, we got to be sure that you did what you said you were going to do, even though we're not coming in and having you come back again. So I mean, yes, you can do it, so it's kind of up to the board if that's how they might want to do it, but yeah, you could.
Thank you.
We just try to nail down the numbers as best as we can.
I completely understand that, for sure.
All right, so you're all set?
I am.
Okay, so I don't want to go too far down, so if I understood what you were just saying, so your ask at this point could potentially be a widening of the light gray area, making Planet Fitness a one-line?
Yes, sir.
Thing, but you'd still asking for the raised section? Thing, but you'd still asking for the, the raised section.
Yes, sir.
Correct? Okay. All right, so that part would still require a waiver.
Yes, sir.
For the extra piece that goes up at the top, but you wouldn't, any, you wouldn't be required for a waiver for the Planet Fitness wording.
Yes, sir.
Any longer. Because right now what you're asking for is both.
Yes, sir, that would be in compliance. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, may I add another comment?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. I don't know, and, and I respectfully disagree with my colleague that if we approved one sign in this space, that that is automatically a, a roadmap for anybody else to come in and get a, and get an approval because we approved this one sign. I think these things are taken on a case-by-case, case-by-case, and Planet Fitness might look good on, in that corner of that building, it may not look good around the corner if Northeastern Electric comes in and says, hey, geez, that's a great idea, we wanna do the same thing. We may or may not, but personally, I don't see a problem with, with updating, if you will, a, I don't even know how old that building is. Call it thirty years, it's probably much older, thirty-year-old facade, I don't have a problem with that, and I think it's actually an improvement, and that's, I'd just like to, I just want.
I'm deeply concerned with your mind-reading talents, Mr. Duffy, that, that's an issue for me. I'd like it if you'd stay out of my head. All right. My point next was the same thing, which is, to me, I don't worry as much about precedent because every one of our decisions has to be made on a case-by-case anyways, and in order to grant this, you have to come up with reasons why you, you know, you should have it versus complying with the underlying bylaw requirements. So Mr. Champ, I will tend to depart on the following, which is, he, he sees the initial list of requirements as the bylaw, and that's a fair point. I go one step further, which is if, if the intent was that you had to comply with the, with the bylaw period.
There would be no waivers.
We wouldn't have the option of granting waivers. So I, I view it that way and that, you know, you can ask, we don't have to give it to you, but you can ask. So for me, I still feel I am complying with the bylaw and the intent of the bylaw even when I grant a waiver because we have the ability to grant the waiver. Otherwise, it'd be like the sidewalk thing, which we've gotten into, which we used to deal with and we don't anymore. It's dealt with elsewhere. We no longer have any control over a sidewalk. That's how people wanted it, and that's fine, and we don't do it, no matter what we think or feel. So that's how I view it, so I'm a little more in with Mr. Duffy saying this, for me, I'm looking at, does this help? Is this good in terms of for the community from a, what does it look like, from the community, from a business standpoint in terms of helping out business, being successful in town, those type of things? And to me, the other question is, and this is sort of one that gets to Mr. Fattalia's comment and I think Mr. Champ's as well, which is, we wanna see you can do it. That's another thing that is important a lot of times to the board members is, could you comply? Yes, you could comply with the requirements. Okay, fine, then we could do that. Is this version better despite the fact that you could comply with a different version? That would, that's where I am at this point or what I'm considering. And to me, I do think it's better, and I do think it would be, you know, wouldn't necessarily be, you know, precedent-setting for the following. One, where you're located, that's not a norm for a lot of the businesses, that you're down the side of the building. So for me, without making a predetermined, you know, decision, I would view that differently than everybody on the front of that building. They're on Main Street. No one's gonna have any problem figuring out where they are. They, you know, they don't necessarily, and again, if they wanted to come in and ask, I would certainly hear them out, but in my mind right now, I could certainly see me reaching a different decision on buildings on Main Street versus one down the side, which you've also pointed out, you're really only getting the bang going south. Nobody can see you coming north, that's a, that's a rather unique situation.
No doubt.
For a business, so you're only getting fifty percent of the bang for your sign as it is because of where you are. So I look at that as being something that's different and, you know, warrant consideration. Also, much of this sign that you have, you know, is, it's not the sign, meaning it's not where you have Planet Fitness written, like you didn't go push Planet Fitness up to the brim of the sign on the, you know, piece that's extended in the roof. It's still centered and, you know, slightly above the, the, the main roof line. Theoretically, you could push it down, you know, same thing, you could comply by pushing it down. And you're only missing the mock on, in terms of let's because they're stacked.
Yeah.
If you, if you spread them out and make it, you know, a one, one-line word, and that's never, that's not an issue anymore at all, and you're still would like the, the change to the facade. So to me, it's sort of like, well, what do I think looks better? Do I want it written, you know, long-hand across, or would I rather see it tight in one place? So to me, I like the version here, knowing that you could comply with it different because I don't have an issue with your, your facade change because I think decoratively it is more attractive than what's there. You know, it may inspire, you know, a couple of the others there. We also have a business that's gonna go in there, I think, at some point down the road. We don't know what their sign's gonna be or what they're gonna ask, but you could see same thing, you know, you want the business to be successful. They are in a similar situation to you, which is, you can only see them coming from one direction, so that's where you're getting your bang. So for those reasons, I could see this as a, as a different, you know, a different ask than many, many places on Main Street. So for those reasons, I could, you know, I can live with the version you've submitted. I don't think it's, you know, it's, the size is not obnoxious in terms of the wording that you're using. You could comply, so that's always important to me at least that, you know, you're not just saying, you know, I couldn't have done this in any version, you know.
Not the biggest sign.
And I kinda like the bump out. I actually think it looks better than just that straight across, you know, corrugated sort of facade.
Yeah.
So I have no problem with what you're asking for or the waivers that would be required to do it. So with that, I will open it up to the audience. Anyone in the audience with any questions, comments, or concerns on this? Seeing none, I will just make note that the file contained a letter from the Tewksbury Square Condominee Association that they've, they approve of the attached facade design that Planet Fitness has put forth this evening. That's the complex itself.
Yes.
Just for anybody at home who isn't sure what that meant. So with that, I'll bring it back to the board, and I guess we can go around and see where the board stands. We'll start with Mr. Champ.
As far as.
What are your next steps?
I'll tell you what, can I, can I pass and go back?
That's kinda funny, actually. Well, was, was I, I'm sorry, but there'll be no more passing, so we're gonna go.
I, I think where I am, I am okay with the height waiver for the stacked letters. What I don't like is the bumped-up facade. I think just both having the waiver for the letters stacked on top of each other and then also elevating it just pushes a little bit too far for me. If you had the, the single-line version and you were bumping that up, I couldn't get behind the waiver for that, but just it's having both of them kind of put in there that makes me a no on that. And those are all my comments.
Okay. You wanna weigh this more?
No, I'm. Basically, the, I think it would work either way, but I, I do, I feel like your sign isn't a big block of LED light and everything, there's a lot of open space around it, it's lettering, it's not a giant logo or something like that. So I would, I would be willing to approve both waivers tonight for your side.
Mr. Duffy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I, I also would, I think it's a, I would approve the waivers, and I think it's a, a good upgrade, and, but, you know, if you are in discussions with landlord about a facade upgrade, let's say, now might be a time to have a discussion about that.
Yes, sir.
You know what I mean? So that we don't end up with, you know, with something very funky along, along the facade. If other businesses decided to come forward with something that, you know, so, I mean, if there's gonna be facade upgrade, you know, throw it out there.
Yes, sir.
Are there any thoughts in the future of, you know, because it is an old building, it's certainly due for an upgrade? I think your sign is a, is a, is, looks, looks very nice, and I think it's a good upgrade. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Fattali.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I like the sign, I like, I like how it's designed, I like it stacked on top of one another as well, I think it makes better sense than being spread out. You know, and I was, I'm hoping you try to get into compliance, but listening to my colleagues and, and their opinions, you know, I hate to hamper a business, that's my biggest concern, is you guys coming in, coming back into Tewksbury and succeeding. So if me, you know, okaying the five-foot extra is gonna help that, and then I would be willing to go and approve those waivers as well.
Thank you, sir.
All right, so before I say anything else, I just have to remember this, I want an absolute promise that you will not come in and paint this thing purple.
Not, not allowed anymore, sir. Not allowed by the.
I already lived through that once, I'm not doing it again.
No purple, no.
All right, okay.
The old world wasn't purple, was it?
They painted that all of a sudden one day, they painted the entire building purple, and then we, we're not happy. And we wanted, we made them put it back. So it would be against your best interest to.
We don't, we don't do that anymore.
Because the next day, you'll have to come see us.
Please, sir.
All right, so my unofficial polling has us at four members okay with the facade change. And five members okay with the Planet Fitness piece on the sign. So you need four votes, so as of this moment, it would appear that you have what you need. So I will ask the board members, what is the pleasure of the board at this time?
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
I have a motion made, do I have a second?
Sure.
Motion made and second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. All right, now as to the signed special permit, do I have a motion? I'm sorry, to the waivers first, I'm gonna do the waivers first. So the waivers, as they are listed on here, is section six-point-two-point-two-point-B, and we need to say the A or it just covers it?
So that first one is actually just a requirement that this will require a building permit and electrical permits. The waivers expressly required would be from six to ten-four, which is to exceed the, the five-foot maximum height.
Okay, all right, so six-point-two-point-ten-point-four and six-point-two-point-two-point-D.
Yep.
So we have the motion to.
What about the hours, Stephen? We're gonna change the hours?
We'll do that in the main.
Okay.
So, so move.
All right, we have a motion made to grant for the, and this is for the version, the colored version and the, and the signed sizings that match that. Okay, so we have a motion made, and we have a second. Motion made and second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Okay, so five, sorry, four to one on the waiver request. Now as to the signed special permit itself, do we have a motion on the signed special permit itself?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the signed special permit.
All right, there were a couple that we had discussed, one was gonna be, we're gonna retain the right to come back and discuss this, the lighting, the, the brightness of the light on the Planet Fitness itself, and we may ask you to tone that down if we find that that's an issue. The other one is the hours of operation, as, as discussed by the applicant, that those are.
Cause you opened at five o'clock, right? Yes, sir.
Yes, okay. All right, and then, I think that was it, right? I missed anything? Okay, so.
That would probably also play into the first comment as far as the neighbors and the, the amount of light and whatnot.
Yeah, I mean, we'll, we'll see, yeah, because it may be that if it's coming on at five AM, that the brightness is.
Understood.
You know, so, all right, so we've got the motion made, we have a second?
Second.
Motion made and second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, so that one's five-zero. All right, so, all set?
One note, if I could, Mr. Chairman, if you are in discussions with the condo owners, if they are interested in doing a full-scale facade improvement, please have them contact my office and we can kind of coordinate that and knock it all out at once. I made the same offer to three forty-five Main Street as well, just to, we're gonna do a facade improvement rather than do it piecemeal, you know, if it can be a comprehensive adjustment, I think we should go for that.
Absolutely, to, to what the other commissioner was saying, you know, you don't want ten different facades.
And, and you know, our, our hope is to open on November seventeenth, so we'll be doing it as soon as humanly possible, but we can certainly get them on the, on the roll if they're willing to. Thank you so much.
Good luck.
As a separate note, I, I sit on a board myself, you guys do a wonderful job, very efficient and very thorough.
And incredibly open-minded, I really appreciate that.
I even believe you now because we already gave you what you wanted, so that's. Moving on to agenda item D, sixteen hundred Shawshin Street, this is continued from our ten-sixteen meeting.
Good evening.
Yeah, could you give your names for the record? The floor is yours.
Tanya Moore with National Development.
Matt Cosmo, Beals Associates.
Billy Collins, Holden Bugby.
Floor is yours, gentlemen.
I believe the agenda list says just one individual project, which is fine, so let me know if I have to split it between lot A or lot.
So right now, we're dealing with sixteen hundred Shawshin Street, the first, and then agenda item E is sixteen hundred Shawshin, the second, we gotta take them separate because they are separate.
Fair enough.
But, you know, I know they overlap, so I suspect that your comments for one lot and the other are the same.
Very similar.
To do them twice.
Very similar, absolutely. So to start with, with lot two, which is Plan Set A, which is on the warehouse facility, we just wanted to come back in, provide an update to the board, you know, we, we continued for a number of weeks and wanted to provide some background, and I said why that may be the case. So namely, we've been working with the Engineering Division to work through a series of comments they gave us on their plan review. I have a number of, of comments here, these have not been submitted to Ms. Lauter, so I don't know if I'm allowed to pass them out to you, but to the extent you guys are interested.
You can, because we'll, we'll give her a copy as well. Are these updated comments to the comments that were still outstanding?
These are just summaries of where we are and open items with the Engineering Division, just to the extent.
Cause there's a lot of them open still.
Yeah.
Not, not too many.
Okay, well, on this list there is, but I will, go ahead.
Let's see.
Thank you.
We need one more here. One more here.
Actually, you might as well drop one down and Alex's to.
All right, so what I provided in the, the document that I just passed out, initially some general notes, just giving a sense of timeline, just where we are in the process. Original plan set was submitted in May of two thousand twenty-three. We received feedback from the Engineering Division on June, which we subsequently met with them in July to work through a number of their comments, try to get on the same page in terms of responses, which led up to our resubmission in August of twenty-three. We recently received an additional round of comments from the Engineering Division. There are, what I would say on, on the warehouse projects, about eleven open items, the majority of which we believe are pretty quick resolution items, there's a few that will require additional work. And so, again, prior to just continuing, wanted to come in and give you guys an update on where we stood, just in terms of the comment related to a number of comments that are open. If you go back to the original letter from June of, of two thousand twenty-three, there were about forty-six comments on that list. The latest letter, you'll see about thirty-eight of those original forty-six comments have been addressed, and I think the comment that's still standing is, this comment has been addressed. So they might show up as a, as a number on the page, but would not necessarily quantify as a, as an open item. So we're certainly whittling down the list. I would say the most impactful comments right now that will take some time to, to resolve, one is, is a discussion with the team at the Engineering Division regarding test pit information. So there are two locations between the warehouse and the mill facility, which, just based on constraints in the site, were either not take, a test pit was not taken or a test pit was taken in an adjacent location, and we were intending to utilize other test pit locations that are surrounding that area to basically come to a conclusion on groundwater elevation and soil conditions. The strict language from the DEP regarding test pit locations that it's within the footprint of the actual structure that we're, that we're intending to, to manage stormwater with. So by the, the strict criteria of that, might not necessarily have achieved that with the So by the, the strict criteria of that, might not necessarily have achieved that with the test pit, but, um, based on, again, just discretion, based on obstructions in the site when we were doing those test pits, um, moved one adjacent. So our request that we'll make coming back to the engineering division is that we have a conditional, a conditional approval subject to a test pit, um, when we're, you know, doing our demo and abatement and prepping for construction. So, um, looking to solve that through a, a conditional approval. The other item that we need to work through is, is working through practicality studies on some of the stormwater management that is required on the site. Just talking about feasibility of, uh, construction of raising the grade to the extent necessary to manage all of the stormwater, uh, given easements, given existing conditions in adjacent parcels. And, and just, just given the, the site conditions as a whole, we don't believe it to be practical. So we will obviously submit that study to the engineering division, which I'm sure will take them some time to review and get back to us with comments. So again, didn't, didn't feel that we're in a position tonight to, to take any sort of decision or vote, but wanted to provide an update on where we stand.
All right. So that takes care of the updates for this one. So, um, we'll go around the room because you have to do them separate. So Mr. Chairman, any comments?
No comments. I think the, the letter from IDR and this supplementary package that was just handed to us, I see some progress here. It seems like we've got some complicated issues.
Sure.
That you're working on. We're happy to see that you're working on them. So, um, so I'm fine for now. Obviously, we're not ready to make a decision on this yet. So, um, I, I like the progress. And I like your, I like how you worded some of these as far as, um, you know, it's, we can't do this, we're willing to do this. So you're not saying no, you're just saying we need to figure out a different way to make this work for both of us.
That's cool.
All right. Mr. Fatale.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm glad to see some, uh, improvement in the comments. Get it, get it going, get it moving. I know you guys haven't been in here for a long time and I almost forget the project sometimes.
Absolutely.
And, uh, we need to get you in here more often and get it resolved. I know you have some legal issues outstanding as well you're working on, so hopefully that can get resolved as well and we can all move forward. So I look forward to getting these final, final numbers resolved so we can get engineering on board and, uh, we can approve your project as you go forward.
Absolutely. And just one note, one note regarding the, the legal items that you, you mentioned. We have reached a tentative agreement with the, the neighboring property that's being documented and don't mean to speak on their behalf, but our intent is to, is to provide that verification of, of agreeance with the, the neighboring property prior to decision.
So one other question, comment I have is, um, the test pits, you have to be in the presence of the DPW.
Yes. And our recent round of test pits, we're, we're done. Absolutely.
All right.
Our original, I will say, uh, to clarify, our original set of test pits were, were not when we were doing our initial due diligence on the site. Uh, we didn't catch that requirement any by law, so at the time we didn't understand it to be a requirement. Once we did understand that, we did another round in the witness of the DPW where we did make that decision to ship one over, given obstructions. So it's still an open item, but we did that second round with the, with the witnessing.
Good to see you guys working together. It makes it a lot easier on our end and your end as well.
Absolutely.
Put that on, I'm all set, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Duffy?
Yeah. I'm all set too, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
I'm all set as well.
Chair is as well. All right. With that, I'll open up to the audience. Anyone in the audience with any questions, comments or concerns on this? Okay. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board and.
Make a motion to continue, Mr. Chairman.
All right. So we will continue this one to six twenty, I'm sorry, seven twenty-five.
Two weeks?
Uh, yeah, November thirteenth.
We'll work to it with the, the engineering division, but obviously it's subject to their review and, and agreeance. So we'll, we'll look to, to give you guys an.
But it's easier to put you on the next one.
Sure.
Than to not and then have it turn out you got it done. So, all right. So we've got this till seven twenty-five on the third, uh, November thirteenth. I have a motion made, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second and all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to agenda item E, which is the other sixteen hundred Shawshin Street. Gentlemen, just for the record again, just give your names for the, uh, for the recording so it goes in correctly.
Matthew Cosmo, Beals Associates.
Daniel Moore, National Development.
Dewey Collins, Holton Bugby.
All right. Floor is yours on the second piece of this.
We'll come back and pass it on. So similarly, um, wanted to revisit again adjacent project, uh, to discuss the project we've made with the engineering division. Have done a number of discussions and resubmissions, well, one resubmission after a number of discussions with their team, in which we, as of last week, received, uh, an updated, uh, review letter with, uh, similar amount of open items. I believe on this one, it's, uh, twelve open items, um, ranging mostly from the original review, a few new items brought up on their secondary review. So great amount of progress when you look at the context of the original amount of comments submitted, um, but still will be requiring a bit of work to, uh, address any of the open items and then regroup with their team to make sure that we're on the same page. So, um, you know, we feel good about where we are. We believe that we'll have a very similar site plan to what was originally submitted. We'll want to make sure that we have a clean bill of health from their team, uh, related to the mill facility. There is a concession being made by the H and B team regarding velocity for sewage rates, um, a bit of a different methodology from an engineering perspective that our team has than the engineering division on how velocity from a sewage perspective is calculated. But, you know, again, just to, to make progress, we will be looking to make a concession to increase the velocity of that sewage flow, uh, through a pump station. So, um, that is probably the, the main design item related to their comments. Everything else, you know, is, is items similar to the, the test pit in nature where it's a, you know, a DEP requirement that we are going to look for some sort of contingent approval on, um, and work with our team to have that as, as part of the review letter.
All right. Mr. Fatale?
I'm all set, Mr. Chairman. I think, um, given that you gave me about twenty pages of notes here, uh, even though I'm a Catholic school educated, uh, senior citizen now, I, I can't, I can't read this too quickly, so. But I take this and I'll look at it over the weekend, but thank you very much.
We'll submit a, a copy, a formal copy to, to Ms. Louder in, in, in writing or in a Word document so you guys can look at it over.
The biggest thing we need is you working with engineering so we can eliminate some of the issues.
Absolutely.
Get their blessing, because we rely on them a lot.
Yeah.
For our decisions.
Absolutely. And we'll also state that their team has been great to work with. Obviously, a bit of a different opinion on some of the, the design aspects, but they've been agreeable and have been helpful throughout the process.
Glad you're working together. All set, Mr. Chairman?
All right. Mr. Lozotti?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. No comments from me.
All right. Mr. Duffy?
Same here right here, but Mr. Fatale, this, uh, just one, um, one item here.
Sure.
Uh, you, you're asking for, or you're offering a point of clarification regarding a peer review of the traffic impact and access study. So trying to refresh my memory.
Sure.
Did you get an original traffic study?
We did.
We got an original traffic study. So I guess my question to my colleagues on the board is, knowing now that we have the cannabis shop going in where it's going in, do we want to ask for an amended study?
I think that was accounted for.
Yeah.
Was it accounted for?
So if I will, um, we did an original, um, traffic impact assessment. We actually returned to the planning board to clarify whether a peer review would be required or not based on the proximity to other studies that have recently been submitted. It was decided that it would not be required. And so, um, you know, we've had a number of conversations with, uh, the engineering division following that meeting. This note on their most recent, um, review came back saying that we were willing to pay for a peer review. There must have been some confusion that was not a statement made by ourselves or anyone on the Beals team. So I just have that note on there to clarify that that was not something that.
Cause that's kind of where I was going with this, was that even if we needed a peer review, we have about five of them.
Right.
So.
Absolutely.
I was just going to say that what you're saying is, does the planning board request a peer review? No. We do not need another traffic consultant to come in and talk about the intersection of East Street and Shawshin.
Fair enough.
So, okay. I'm all set, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
All right. Can I get through anybody?
It's everybody.
So just me. All right. So I'm all set. I only note that on this TEC report, for some reason, they've used a font that's typically used for ransom notes. I don't really understand why and it's kind of weird to look at. But other than that, I'm all set. I'll open up to the audience. Anyone in the audience with any questions, comments or concerns? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board. Where's the pleasure of the board?
Make a motion to continue the hearing, Mr. Chairman?
All right. We're going to continue this till seven thirty on eleven thirteen. We have a motion made, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. All right. We'll see you guys next time.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
All right. That brings us to agenda item F, which is the eleven sixty-seven, eleven seventy-seven, eleven eighty-seven Main Street. The applicant has requested to be continued. We have this penciled in for seven oh five on eleven thirteen, so can I have a motion to continue it till then?
So moved.
Motion made in second, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Same request for agenda item G, which is nine thirteen East Street. Continue to, who am I, nine thirteen? To seven ten. Do I have a motion to continue to seven ten on eleven thirteen? Motion made. Do I have a second? Motion made in second, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to agenda item H, eighteen seventy-nine Main Street. Applicant has requested to be continued. We have them in for seven fifteen. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
A motion made or a second? Motion made in second and all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to agenda item I, fourteen thirty-eight Main Street, also requested to be continued. That one is to seven twenty. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion made, do I have a second? Motion made in second and all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to agenda item J, eighteen thirty-six, eighteen forty-six Main Street. Continue from our ten sixteen meeting. Once you get settled, just your name for the record, the floor is yours. Michael Colomba. Okay. Floor is yours.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Well, I, I submitted everything that was requested from the last meeting and hopefully, um, it gets approved so I can do the outside side work and as necessary to get this project moving.
All right. So this letter, we, this letter has outstanding items, correct?
Correct. So the items that you had submitted to me via email were the asbills for the grease trap. The other comments haven't been addressed yet.
What the engineer submitted, all the plans, he revised the sidewalk.
I didn't receive those items. After we spoke, I didn't receive anything other than the grease trap, um, plans that you had submitted to me over the weekend.
Cause he followed up right after the last meeting, he followed up and he generated all new plans for, and I'm sure it was submitted because I, I am almost hundred percent sure.
With the drainage calculations, I didn't receive those.
No, he did all the size showing because on the previous plans, he did not have the sidewalks and he showed the sidewalks with all the measurements and, um.
So we have a letter here from engineering on Tewksbury.
Yes.
Saying a lot of these comments still remain.
Did you get the October twentieth letter?
Yeah. And I gave it to the engineers and he was following up. I apologize, I've been traveling, you know, I don't.
No, I, so I don't want to hold you up, but so just so you know, I don't know whether or not your engineer submitted, but they told you they submitted or what you think they did.
I saw them.
Right. He may have generated them. When he submitted them or if he submitted them, I don't know. All I could tell you is that as of right now, the engineering department is still listing those items or some of those items as unresolved. So either they haven't yet had a chance to review what they got, if, depending on when they got it. Or whatever was submitted still didn't answer their questions sufficiently, in which case they're going to say this is still unresolved. And then, is there a third option? No, I think that's it. Those are the two.
Soon after the, the last meeting, you know, I engaged the engineers, we'll get this done. And, you know, a few days later I received copies and everything and I assumed that everything was submitted. I followed up with the, um, grease traps, that was one of the questions. Unfortunately, you know, I, the records weren't in the town hall, so I got those and folded. You got those, right? Yeah. So I just assumed that everything was taken care of. I mean.
Yeah. I, I, I don't know, we won't be able to answer that question for you other than just, but like I said, which is the engineering department still thinks, thinks there's unresolved issues. And as Ms. Louder stated, she doesn't believe that she's received the plans that you believe have been generated. So I don't know where the disconnect is, but obviously we're not going to be able to do anything tonight to resolve the final part of this without those things being addressed and submitted to where they need to come into. So I don't know what else.
Let me ask you, in the, in the interim, you know, can I do the, I mean, can I do like the sidewalks within the property, put the signs up? Or am I still at a standstill? Where, where do I go from here?
Yeah.
I, I, you know, I don't know what to do anymore. Like I said, this thing is, I, I.
So I can, all I can tell you is that anything you need to do that requires our sign off first.
Yeah.
You cannot do because we have not yet signed off on the project. So if there's something that you are allowed to do without our approval, I suppose those are things, but you'd be taking them up with somebody else.
I mean, I'd be building all over the country. I don't know if you guys.
I believe you. Like I said, I don't know what the disconnect is.
I am so challenged in this process, you know what I'm saying? I, I am so discouraged.
Can I make a suggestion as well? Just to make sure that we don't have any of this the next time. And this is obviously completely up to you, because I know there's a cost involved anytime somebody comes with you. But I don't know if it might make sense to have your engineer come with you next time to try to hammer out any last details that are not resolved. Because if they're, you know, they're leaving you here to answer engineering questions without, you know.
I paid these guys to do that. And I've seen the report, you know, I, I see the stuff being generated and I assume that automatically they get fed, right? But I wish that this, process wise, okay? Like I said, I, I've been building my entire life. I build all over the country. I don't know if you guys know, I built like the first thirty Starbucks. I built the air traffic control towers all over the country. I have never come across so many challenges in, in the little projects such as this. I mean, I get about thirty-five million dollars with the work in the process right now. And this little tiny project in Tewksbury, i- is causing me more headaches than everything else put together. You know? It, when I submitted the first plans in the beginning, I wish this was all told to me day one. I would have complied. It's not an issue. You know what I mean? I think I've been very cooperative, you know? But I do something, oh no, but you need this one. Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I provide this. Oh, no, then, then I need one more. You know, it took me six months just to get the border, border health approved for all the equipment. I couldn't move this, I need a plug over here and I need to move the sink over there. And, and, and it wasn't just, you submit the plans, here's what you do, you do it, you know? It was sort of like, no, do this, then I comply with this. Oh, no, by the way, but you need to move this over here. And this is what's happening, the whole process, two years to build a small restaurant like this, two years and hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars over budget. And, and I, I still do not.
I appreciate, I appreciate all those.
I'm not, I'm not, you guys, you, you guys have been first class. I'm not, please, I understand, this is not me with you guys, you know what I'm saying?
Like I said, for your purposes though, I think our hands are tied if we're still getting comments back from engineering that they haven't received what they need. Where the disconnect is, I don't know.
Okay. But, but this is a new round of, you know, submitter requests. I, I did a lot of work in California, right? There's a list a hundred times, a hundred things long, right? And you check each one. Once it's, it's all in, you get your permit and you go to construction. It doesn't change anymore. This is up, I get a permit, then I'm requested to do something else and then something else and then some. I, I'm just venting a little bit, please, so forgive me in advance. Procedurally, it has to be better than this. I mean, you know, you guys understand business, you know, time is money, you know? And I, I, you guys want a sidewalk, sure, I'll do it, no problem, you know? You guys want this, sure, I'll take care of it, you know? Even though it costs me, you know, if I'd known this, I bought this building two years ago, two and a half years ago. And I'm a professional, I, I, I've done hundreds, millions of dollars with the work all over the country. And this is probably one of the smallest jobs and it has caused me so much headache. It is unbelievable how much headaches this job, this single small project is causing me.
Well, so what I.
And I apologize, like I said, I, I.
What I would say at this point though is I would say, you know, come tomorrow, you know, you, you, you talk to Alex, find out where things stand and then talk to your engineer.
My engineer's going to get an earphone in the morning, I promise you guys. He's not going to be, he's not going to have a good day tomorrow, I promise.
I'm going to give you this letter to take with you, because I don't need it.
No, we haven't, we haven't.
October 20th was the last...
In the last two months, I've had two major surgeries, I've been traveling for business, you know, I have like, I have a sports, I mean, I have numerous other businesses, you know what I'm saying? And I trust and give these projects to my peers, you know? And the only thing that I'm frustrated is, why didn't I, why did I not go through this when I got the permit? It took me a year and a half to get a permit. Why wasn't this a checklist when I got the permit? You know, I just wish I knew then, you know, so that I would have done it back then. Once you get the permit, you think that once you get a permit, okay, you just go to building, and you're done, you know? And every time I do something, oh no, but now we need this one, now we need this one, now we need this one. And this is why I feel a little bit frustrated. And by the way, you know, Alex has been fantastic, very cooperative, returns phone calls. You know, the engineer refused to meet with us. I mean, I don't understand where that came from, I mean...
Well, you better get them together and get them on the same page, because if not, we can't prove anything until we get, okay.
How could an engineer not be able to sit with a town engineer to get a clarification? You know, we get a letter back respectfully, decline to meet, and we're looking at each other, saying, okay, why is this? I don't understand, I mean, that's what I'm saying. This is a small project for me, and it is causing me more headaches than you guys can imagine, you know? And I get it, it's not pointing to you guys, please, you guys have been first class and very cooperative and professional. But for the record, I want this to be said on the record, that it just, it's a never-ending, a new thing comes up every, every time. Now, next meeting, I suppose, will be the 13th, right?
Correct.
Okay, I have, because I'm also, I work with Italian consulate, you know, I am an electoral official, just like you guys, and I have other commitments on the 13th. Can I send representative if...
Sure. Bring your engineer in, bring your consultants in, and all the...
It doesn't come for free, you know?
I know, I know, and I feel for you, I understand, but it's just, we can't do anything until we have the final okay from engineering, saying, you're on full compliance, all set, permit's approved, go ahead.
I'm going to get this asphalt in before the winter comes in, you know what I'm saying? And, you know, otherwise, it's going to be, you know, higher rates, higher construction costs, you know, a heated concrete, you know?
All right, so to keep with compliance purposes, there's nothing really for the board to comment on.
No.
There's no one in the audience, so that takes care of the public comment section. With that, I'll return it to the board, and I will, we can put this in for 7:35 on November 13th. Do we have a motion to continue?
Yep, so moved.
Motion made and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Hope we get this straightened out, all right?
I may not be able to be, like I said, a...
Yeah, that's fine.
Any relations to the Champers in Somerville? Okay, no relations.
It's August Champers.
No, because I grew up in Somerville when I came from Italy, and there was a Champers family that, this is a long time.
That's where I was born.
Oh, no kidding?
I grew up mostly in Malden, but I was born in Somerville.
In Waltham?
Ah, Malden, I grew up mostly, but my parents are both from Somerville.
Because I came from Italy in 1970, and I lived in Somerville until I was 21.
My grandparents had a house over Hillsdale, over near Tufts, for ages.
They were up on Cedar Street, you know, did a lot of stuff in Somerville, did a lot of developments, good city. Thank you, guys.
Good luck.
Again, I apologize if I'm venting, you know, but it's been a challenge, I have to say, you know what I mean? And, thank you.
I'd like to see you open.
I, the inside is almost, believe me, but I tell, the inside is almost open, you know? I mean, I don't mean open, it's almost done, I'm like, now, you know, we just fine tuning things right now, but the inside is literally 90% done, you know?
All right, good luck.
Yeah, thank you, guys.
All right, thank you. All right, so with that, we'll go to correspondence, which we have none.